It's good to see everyone. It's a pleasure to call this meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen for the City of Natchez to order. I'd like to ask you to please stand for our prayer to be followed by our pledge. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day you've given us, each day as a kid. And Father, as we go into the month of October, we do remember all of those in our community who have dealt with cancer. And Father, we pray that this will be a time of awareness and also a time for those who feel led to, to go and get that extra help, that extra checkup, because truly prevention is such a blessing. And you have given us such great doctors, and we thank you for the strides that have been made. Father, we also lift up all those in our community and within our city who are dealing with loss, illness, or setbacks of any sort. Just be with them. We are a city that cares, and we ask you, oh Lord, to intervene in all of these situations. Now, Father, be with us as we come to you with heavy hearts about this weekend and the violence that has taken place all over our state affecting the lives of so many, and especially our young people. And we ask a special hand of protection upon all of those who are involved and those here in Natchez, especially at our schools. Let us have a safe weekend for our balloon festival and all of the other prayers and petitions. In our hearts, we lift them up to you. In your precious name, we pray. Amen. Now let us repeat together our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We'll ask the clerk to administer the roll call.
Alderwoman Hall.
Here.
Alderman Frazier.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderwoman Irving. Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman Maroney. Mr. Mayor, we have a forum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now have the approval of minutes.
We have three sets of minutes for approval today, the first being the September 22nd special call meeting.
A motion made by Alderwoman Hall and seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion. We will call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item.
Thank you. Next item is the September 23rd regular meeting.
What is the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderwoman Smith and seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion. We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item.
The final set of minutes is the September 30th special call meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Davis, seconded by Alderwoman Hall. Discussion. We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We now will welcome our visitors, and we are very honored to have with us Dr. Helen Davis with Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., and approving the Delta Day for this amazing group of ladies in our community. If you could, please, Dr. Davis, if you could, please come to the lectern. And we have five minutes for you to share your presentation.
I want to yield to my co-chair. When I filled out the paperwork, they did not ask who was speaking. So my co-chair, she'll be speaking on behalf of us this morning, so I yield to her. Thank you.
All right. And I think we all know this though.
Alderman, and yes, this morning, I'm Thelma Newsome, a member of Natchez Alumni Chapter, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. I bring you greetings from our president, Rethenia Rose Jackson, and our other members. I'm going to ask the other chapter members who are here if they will stand at this moment. We want to say thank you to the Mayor and the Natchez Board of Aldermen for allowing us to be a part of today's agenda. Over the years, a wide range of programs addressing education, health, international awareness and development, and strengthening of the African-American family have evolved through Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. In realizing its mission, Delta Sigma Theta provides an extensive array of public service initiatives through what we call our five-point programmatic thrust. We have economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement with social action. The goal of our Political Awareness and Involvement Social Action Committee, of which I'm serving as co-chair, is to equip our community with the knowledge and skills needed for meaningful participation in our community. What we're asking this morning, we have a wide range of activities, discussion, and educational resources. We aim to inspire civic engagement and empower individuals to take action. We want to be a part of what you're doing here in the City of Natchez, and we offer our organization to provide support in whatever program implemented by this entity, which will foster general collaboration between us and between the school district, the city, the county, and the community. We are willing to work with you in every aspect to ensure the success of these programs that are in the best interest of our community. Again, we thank you for allowing us to be a part of your agenda and know that you can call on us at any time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mrs. News. We appreciate all that you do. Alderman Frazier, you want to make a motion?
I'm moved that we approved the Delta Sigma Theta Day.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Alderman Frazier, seconded by Alderwoman Hall. Discussion. We will now call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. We are so grateful that you all were here today, and we invite you to stick around for just a minute longer because we actually have a presentation to make to you. And so, talk about the efficiency of government. And the efficiency of Mr. Richard Burke. I'm going to, we have a certificate to present to you today for the many years of dedicated service to the people of Natchez, Mississippi, and we look forward to more opportunities for partnership and collaboration as we work together towards continued success. And I'd like to invite you ladies to please come where I can present this, and I'm going to invite members of the Board of Aldermen to also come, and we'll take a picture with you. Want to make sure everybody's times be safe. And we're going to, we'll share this with local media. One, two, three, Delta Sigma. It's kind of like that.
And I'd just like to introduce one of us. This is our founder, Saul. As you heard, this is our chair, Dr. Helen Davis. This is one of our members, Dory House, and our co-chair, Delmon.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If it was possible, could we get another picture of Alderwoman Irving? She's a Delta.
We certainly can. Come on.
Well, thank you, Alderman Frazier.
Why don't you come and stand beside me? We'd love to have more pictures of you showing your Delta sister who is a member of the public.
Yeah, I apologize for that this morning.
Isn't this something that attracted you?
No.
All right. Alderman Frazier, good call.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now will move on to our next item of business, and we have Mr. Carl Hayes II. A discussion regarding the police department and also Stu Pot. And so, Mr. Hayes, it's a pleasure to have you with us today, and you are recognized for five minutes.
All right. How's everyone doing? Grand Rising?
Good morning.
Society's greatness is measured by their handling of the disadvantaged, okay? We have, as of 2020, we have a little over 14,000 people here in Natchez, Adams County. We have a little over 6,000 households and a little over 3,000 families, okay? When you take 365 days, you multiply that by five volunteers, okay? You get a little under 2,000 people. I find it really a shame that we, as Natchezians, have not done enough. Okay? I've been living in Germany. I've been over here. I've come back now, doing a little work, taking care of things, and helping them out, seeing what's going on, seeing stuff like the downtown beautification project, okay? The Natchez Welcome Center is a bust, okay? And the Stu Pot is still around, taking care of, they are dedicated to taking care of the disadvantaged. So I would really like to see us as Natchezians do a little bit better for the Stu Pot. Now, as far as the police, I had a situation on Rose Lawn where a deputy sheriff's son wanted to get a gun involved. So I wanted to press charges. I wanted to get, I wanted to go to maximum, okay? Went down to the police station to take care of everything. Now, when they did come to the house, they didn't introduce themselves properly. As public service, you need to introduce yourself every single time you're dealing with a member of the public, okay? So I go down to the police station, everything, taking care of this. They say it's going, all we need is a signature for the affidavit. Okay? After almost an hour of waiting, okay, I get upset, and when I get upset, it goes down, okay? And they sat up here and sent a Corporal Jenkins to me. He walking in. This him? Follow me. Where are we? Okay? Professionalism, okay? Where are we? So I'm getting upset. He didn't want to deal with me. I go talk to the commander. I'm a little upset, a little more than upset, and Lieutenant King wants to start talking about arresting me because I was cursing and stuff, okay? Freedom of speech, this and that stuff, it doesn't matter. Diffuse situations. And I'm tired of seeing people not diffuse situations properly. He should have said, you know, Corporal Jenkins should have came to me. Hey, I'm sorry that you, as a member of the public, were, had to wait this long, okay? What we're going to do, I'm going to take care of you here. Five minutes here. Signature, you're out of here. But this entire debacle happened because of inefficiency, okay? On their thing, on their website, they talk about they're committed to the delivery of police services in the most efficient manner possible. Why did they take so long? Something so simple, and it turned into somebody threatening me with arrest? As a two-time Iraq War veteran, I don't appreciate that whatsoever, okay? I've had too many people die in my arms and stuff, okay? Then you have, in my opinion, what I've seen, talking with others also, the police officers are too cool here. They're driving around in their souped-up fast cars and stuff because they want to sit up here and be able to hang with the criminals and stuff, but they're not doing that. They have a very, very bad reputation. That's not how you're going to get anything done with each other. Teamwork makes the dream work, okay? So what are we doing with each other? They're not preventing anything. They're, they just have a bad reputation. And I could really get into the other things that people talk about with me, or we can do it in privacy and stuff. It doesn't matter to me. They say they impartially enforce all laws and ordinances. If that was true, there would be no corruption and no favoritism anywhere in America, or on earth for that matter. Everybody in Natchez pretty much knows each other. Everybody knows what families are doing what. Everybody knows who's doing this with that person. Everybody knows who's the corrupt ones. If we can't stand up, what are we doing then? Are we just playing a game? The world is a stage. We all know that. So what are we going to do to take care of this? And I keep saying we. This is not no, oh, y'all need to do this, or they need to do this. No, we need to do this as a community. We are too small and too great of a city to not be taking care of this stuff, okay? We are the former capital of the South, okay? Whatever your feelings are on the South and the North and everything else, we still have an importance. Why not be those role models and don't sit up here and say, well, I'm just doing my job? Because after the Nuremberg Trials, they told the Nazis, you are not allowed to sit up here and say, I'm just doing my job. So now this is international law. So I don't see why it always is, well, I'm just doing my job, or I'm not getting paid enough. They don't talk about anything about selfless service, accountability, honor, yeah? If you're doing this job and you're scared and you're walking around, oh, oh, you're scared of everything, then you're not doing good. As a soldier, you have to have composure. You have to have discipline. You have to know what's going on. Be situationally aware of everything that's going on around you, but also be able to sit up here and help people. Don't sit up here and say you're here to protect the community and serve the community when that's not what you're doing because people talk about it every day. And we're going to see, it's live streaming, so we're going to see who's going to be talking about this later on and stuff. This is very, very important to me, okay? Because I've seen how it is in Germany. I've seen what people can do when they want to take care of the disadvantaged. We have too much money in this city not to be doing something, okay? I thank you for your time, all right? Have a great day.
Mr. Hayes, I want to first thank you for your service to our country.
Very welcome.
And I also want to thank you for your service to our community. And yes, Stu Pot is indeed a treasure. Been here for decades. I was honored to have Beverly Adams, the current executive director, as my guest on my radio show Tuesday evening. And we have put the information out. We need people to make donations. I actually made a donation and challenged others to, and I know one person called to make a donation while we were on the radio.
Right.
And that information is on our website. We, I'm sorry, on our Facebook page. I'm going to ask that we reshare that. But in addition to that, yes, we need more volunteers there. I also want to say we take very seriously the comments you've made about our police department, and I want to give you my card, and if you would like to meet with me at all.
Most definitely.
I'm happy to meet with you. I meet with people all the time. And I know that our police chief is not here. We do have Commander Best here. I know that they will consider the things that you shared today.
If you allow me just a few more seconds right quick.
Well, we are, we've already stretched the time limit.
Okay.
Very quickly.
Just want to let you know, I've already gone to places like Walmart and Stein and got them to donate and stuff. And all it takes is a matter of, you know, a letterhead and stuff, so.
Yes.
We're getting things underway. I'm trying to get the community involved, and I just want to just make it seem for everyone else.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Alderman Frazier?
I would just like to simply say, I commend you on your courage for coming here and bringing these valid complaints to the board. Just let me simply say, as you say about the Stu Pot, that is valid. Like I said, we need to put more effort into the Stu Pot. And dealing with your concerns with the police department, as the mayor say, our police chief is not here, but your sentiments and concern that you are addressing are valid because other people are the same complaints and stuff as you do. And I too take the police department as serious. As being a former officer who served 32 years at the Natchez Police Department, I can assure you that these complaints that you got, they need to be addressed, and they will be addressed by this board. And I say, as a public citizen, your concern in the Iraq War, baby, you're right on point. And as when I leave, I see that you get all this outspokenness from your daddy.
And his mama.
Alderwoman Smith.
And his mama.
I don't want to go without saying thank you for the many, many volunteers that do volunteer for Stu Pot. Rotary does, Jefferson Street, I think the Catholic Church, and we just gave, Rotary gave a big donation. And we do have so many generous people. There are people I'm sure that aren't volunteering, but there are so many people that do for the Stu Pot and love it and appreciate it. If I love serving on Sunday, I do that.
Mrs. News. Yes. I just want to speak on behalf of our organization, the Montevideo Jubilee, too. We do donate food to the Stu Pot. And I'm not just talking at that time. We had canned goods. We had over maybe 300, 400 canned goods that we have given several times this year. So we did it at the end of December, and then we did it again just recently. So we're putting there, in my church, at the end of this month. They are. They are, and I do agree.
It should be way better. It should be a tip-top.
Absolutely. It should be, and I do agree with that. It should be. I also want to say, you know, they've shared that their need is met, and we try to just put that out in our community as well for those that can donate different organizations. So everybody understands, you know, and they're putting their resources together to make those donations to the Stu Pot.
Give some time. Donate some time.
Yes.
It is. It is. I agree.
Thank you. Yes, Alderwoman Hall.
Thank you very much for coming today. I appreciate what you have said, and we do take that seriously. And I am so sorry that you had a gun pulled on you by a law enforcement official.
It was by his son.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, the son, the son.
And he was bragging about it, so.
Thank you very much.
Wow.
Mr. Hayes, again.
Thank you. And you guys get his Robby's mom.
We, yes, always good to see you. Our next item on our agenda is under City Business. Leah Hunter, our downtown Natchez lines executive director, and she is to provide some updates.
Good morning.
I wanted to say this to Leah. It's been such a pleasure to see you out and about doing so many. It's been such a pleasure to see you out and about doing so many things. We had a wonderful Saturday.
We did.
And at the ribbon cutting for the October Festival, the Pumpkin Patch, but also at the new bookstore. You represented Natchez so well in your comments and remarks. And we are very grateful for the job you're doing.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I just have a few updates. And I wanted to make sure I'll have some slides on the screen just to show some photos as I go through our presentation. And so first, I just want to again thank you all for your continued support of Downtown Natchez Alliance and for all that you do to champion our city. On behalf of our Board of Directors, some of those that might be in the room, just kind of wave your hands. Our downtown merchants and the many residents and visitors who benefit from a thriving downtown, we are truly grateful for your partnership. Our Downtown Pumpkin Patch, as the mayor said, is in full swing on Main and South Pearl. This year, we expanded our activities, reached out and got a little bit more volunteer participation and engagement. And we're making downtown the center of attention for the entire month of October. I also want to give a special shout out to Mayor Gibson, Mayor Pro Tem Sarah Carter-Smith, and Lynn Jenkins with the Chamber of Commerce for helping us cut the ribbon and kick off our fourth annual season of the Pumpkin Patch Festival on Saturday. We also held a very successful Halloween Pet Parade that same day where we collected donations for the Natchez Adams County Humane Society and hoofbeats and paw prints. Two pets were actually adopted that day and several more adoptions followed in the days after that. You can visit our website, natchesdna.org for more information on the coming up. And we also will have an event that's going to benefit the Stupot on the 25th. It's called the Witch's Ride. So guests and participants are invited to donate $5 and any canned goods or meats that might be requested. On Monday, DNA joined the Fall in Love with Natchez cleanup, working with the city departments and volunteers to weed and mulch what I'm told was more than a 100 downtown tree wells. So a special thanks to our Board President, Norma West, for working with the city to lead that effort. It's also been a very fruitful season for DNA through our ARPA-funded facade balcony and awning program. We've installed more than 29 awnings across 18 downtown properties with three more in progress. The Simons Building, the Simons Property by Memorial Park, Darbries on Main, and Robert White's Ebony Barber Shop on St. Catherine. And then even better, some of the private property owners have been inspired to invest their own. And so they're adding new awnings at Rolling River Reloaded, Slick Ricks, Hello Gorgeous, Pilates on Pearl, and the Medicaid Office on Canal. So Phase Two will begin soon with the facade work on seven additional downtown buildings, including Nest, Kudzu, Cooley &amp; Co., the Triangle Building, and three buildings also within the MLK District. In September, I attended the Destination Downtown in El Dorado, Arkansas, and DNA participated in the Placemaking Summit in Yazoo City, which gave us the time to connect with other communities and partners and kind of share ideas that we've already started putting into action. We are thrilled to have welcomed Dixon Books on Main Street. And we're preparing for our Holiday Host and Toast to open on Sunday, November 9th, where we'll kick off our season of holiday shopping. And the merchants will be open every Sunday through Christmas. So looking ahead, we're gearing up for the Main Street America Accreditation, our strategic spring planning retreat, and the next round of downtown market studies. So as always, Downtown Natchez is active, collaborative, and we're continuing to move forward every day. Again, thank you to all those who have participated and supported the Pumpkin Patch as we've been open. And we thank you again for your support and being a part of our success.
That's a wonderful presentation. Thank you, Leah. Alderman Hall.
Thank you very much. We recently put a marker for the Woodlawn Historic District, which is on the National Register.
Okay.
Is that site included in your weed eating?
I'm not sure. It was... This was the Monday project with the city. Is that what you're referring to?
That's not included.
I know that it needs some work. But we would just focus it on that.
Okay. Thank you.
I will ask, are there other comments or questions?
I just want to give her a comment. Great job, as always. And for all those other buildings that are getting the honor, that's great.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Great job.
We are so proud of our DNA. And I will repeat something that I said Saturday. We have absolutely gone above and beyond. And where we started just a few years ago, look where we are now. And it truly is great to see the revitalization taking place downtown. I think if you look around the state and look at other areas of the country, you'll see that the cities that are thriving are the cities that have not abandoned their downtowns. But they treat their downtown as a true nucleus of economic growth. And if it weren't for a vibrant downtown, we would not be, for example, the number one stop on American Cruise Lines and Viking Cruise Lines itinerary up and down the Mississippi River. That's just one example. In fact, it will be this weekend during our balloon festival that so many of our merchants downtown will be making thousands of people welcome as they visit our 40th Annual Balloon Festival. And so I'm grateful that we've got a good DNA, a good Main Street program, and so much happening in Natchez. Good things. Well?
Ms. Mayor.
Frazier?
There are only, I think, about four or five cities in the state of Mississippi that concentrate on downtown development. And Natchez is one of them. All the other cities in Mississippi are, they basically have abandoned the downtown area. So when tourists come here, that's the first thing they see is downtown.
That's true. That's true. Thank you, Alderman Frazier.
I think a lot. I just want to add addition to his. I think a lot of the cities are looking to what? To restore their downtown. That's basically what we see a lot of them doing. Laura has, and I think that was a start, and then Vicksburg. Because when we would go to the meetings for DNA, that was one of the conferences, or the meetings at the conference that we would attend.
Yes.
Focusing on our downtown. So it's rebuilding across the cities. Because if you're a tourist town, then that's where you want it to be focused.
Right. Right. Thank you so much. Well, we'll move on now to our next... Excuse me. Our next item, Department Director's Reports, Mr. James Johnson, Community Development. You are now recognized. And Mr. Johnson, I just don't see where you've been doing a whole lot. How many things do you have on the agenda today?
I did add an item or two. And one didn't make it, but will.
We're so grateful for you. A lot of great things on your report today.
Good morning, Mayor and Board. I did provide you a draft report the other day. I have made a couple of slight edits and one addition at the end. Installation of new roofing system for FY26 budget at Natchez Civic Center. For FY26, the Mayor and Board of Alderman did budget for replacement and installation of a new roofing system at the Civic Center.
Can you read louder, James?
Ma'am?
Can you read louder so that they can hear you out there in the mic? Thank you.
For FY26, the Mayor and Board of Alderman budgeted funds to replace and install a new roofing system at the Natchez Civic Center. Staff is requesting a motion to sign a professional services agreement with Wakester Duncan to provide design phase, bidding, and construction mission for this project. Contract totals $19,242.
The Alderman Hall has made the motion, seconded by Alderman Davis. We'll have discussion. We will proceed to the vote. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. And it is so needed. And I'm so grateful we're getting it done. Next item.
Preservation of the Angelletti House Change Order Number Four. Staff in concert with Wakester Duncan is requesting a motion to approve Deductive Change Order Number Four, totaling $15,500, reducing Wilmark Construction contracts from 232 to 213 and $500.
So move.
Second. A motion is being made by Alderman Irving, seconded by Alderman Maroney. Discussion? Alderman Irving?
Thank you. I know we're reducing the change order.
Yes. We did not use our contingency allowance.
Okay. Thank you.
Or all of our allowance, I should say.
All right. That's good. We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Always good to see a change order that saves money.
That's exactly right.
Next item, Mr. Johnson.
North Bluff Electrical Improvements Rental Rates, 2022 Capital Improvements GOB. Staff, Mr. Dollar, Ms. McKenzie, myself, is requesting a motion to approve the updated rental rates for the RV pedestals and electric panels located at the intersection of North Broadway and Madison. In summary, rates are provided for weekday usage, i.e. Monday through Friday, and weekend usage, i.e. Saturday and Sunday. The refundable deposit, should there be no damage incurred, will be the same as the calculated total to lease the electric panels and/or RV pedestals. Finally, there is a one-time $25 charge for Public Works to inspect and re-inspect RV pedestals and panels before and after usage and to turn on and off the panels after usage. Also included with the rental of the electrical improvements is a liability waiver that has been reviewed and approved by Mr. Lousworth. Pleasure to the Board.
Pleasure to the Board. Motion made by Alderman Maroney and seconded by Alderman Irving. Discussion?
Call a question?
I think we have... Do we have more discussion? Or we ready to call a question? Alderman Irving?
Thank you, Mayor. I just was gonna ask, Monday through Friday is one rate and Saturday and Sunday is a different rate?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have the dollar amount?
Yes, ma'am. They are on the attached notes provided to the draft report.
Okay. Okay. I didn't see that.
Everything is detailed there.
Okay.
Yes.
And this is to rent all risers and pedestals 1,000 flat rate per day. These are for, you know, the large events that use the power.
Power.
And then the weekend is a weekend cost of $2,000 and all of the stipulations there. There is a lot of expense in the city when the high power is used.
It is.
And a lot that the city goes through to make those facilities available.
Available?
Yes. Do we have... And then the usage fees are also spelled out. Those are for the risers and pedestals. But if you look at the usage fee, it ranges from anything from $25 a day to $100 a day, depending on the number of amps and the other provisions included. It's a very technical process. And I'm very grateful to you, Mr. Johnson, and also to Mr. Dollar for helping us figure all of this out.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes. And our city clerk also helped with this. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Did we have any more questions, discussion?
This is for the EV?
Alderman Frazier?
This is for the construction of EVs.
No, sir. The EV charger has its own rate of 22 cents per kilowatt hour.
And it is functioning?
It is. We will receive notification of deposit around the 10th of the month.
Okay. Alderman Frazier?
Let me just say this right quick. My EV charger, I just want to make a little brief statement. I was at the football game this weekend. And one of my friends got a phone call on his phone. And he was talking to his uncle who stay in New York. And he said that he wanted to come to Mississippi, but he had an electric vehicle. And when he looked on it, when he looked in the book, he said, there was no... There was in the magazine, there was nowhere in Mississippi that he finally reached charging station. They said very few, about two or three blue lights. So I sit there, listen to him after a while. I told my sister, I said, tell your uncle that's a lie. I'm gonna say, tell your uncle that's a lie. He said, huh? Tell your uncle that's a lie. Because we have two in Natchez.
Yes.
We have several, yes.
We have more than two.
But I told him we had more company. But people seem to think that since we are from Mississippi, we are backward. But we are not backward. Only thing, only thing is that progress is a little slow getting here.
Maybe the portal hasn't been upgraded so that you know their locations.
Well, thank you. I will now call for the question. The question's been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item, Mr. Johnson.
Construction of High-Speed EV Chargers by Entree, Mississippi. At the August 12th meeting of the Mayor and Board, a motion was approved allowing Entree, Mississippi to locate, construct, operate, and maintain two high-speed chargers at the convention center. Staff, Mr. Dollar and myself, is requesting a motion to allow the mayor to sign the Electric Vehicle Charging Station Eastman Agreement, which has been reviewed by City Attorney Mr. Lousworth and to be located and recorded at the Adam County Courthouse.
It's a pleasure. Motion made by Alderman Hall, seconded by Alderman Maroney. Discussion? We... This is a great thing. We're so excited this is happening for us. We will now call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item.
Abatement and demo of the Frye Building and adjacent parking lots. This is more of an FYI. Staff in concert with PPM Consultants want to remind the Mayor and Board that permission to abate and demolish the reference site was granted on May 13th and that this activity is expected to advertise in the local newspaper end of the month and into November, with bids being received in December. So should you have any inquiries, it is forthcoming.
And no action is needed?
No action.
I just want to say, it's exciting. I get asked all the time, what's happening with Eola? What's happening with the Frye Building? Well, things take time. But this is a fantastic achievement. And you've worked so hard, Mr. Johnson. No one knows what goes on behind the scenes to get these projects done. But you have not given up. And we're so grateful for all the professional expertise from our environmental engineers, consultants, to others. And it's so great that we are now proceeding with what will be the first step in eventually demolishing the Frye Building. That will then become a very important staging area for the restoration of the Eola Hotel as a merit tribute property to open in 2027. And it will also be a very important location now when we get to that point for parking needed for the Eola. So great things are happening. We'll continue on now to the next item.
Yes, I do have an addition. Wall graphics, that is the timeline displayed at the convention center. Quote bids were to be received this morning at 9:00 a.m. for the wall graphics. Only one quote bid was received. For State of Mississippi Purchase Law Summary, at least two bids must be received to be considered. Staff is requesting a motion to reject the quote bid and to again seek quote bids for the graphics at timeline display.
Second, motion made, uh, by Alderwoman Hall and seconded by Alderman Davis. Discuss, uh, was that Alderman Davis? Who seconded the motion? And we're now discussion. We'll call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We'll proceed now to Ms. Carla Monroe, Senior Center Director. Hello, Ms. Monroe.
Hello. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Happy to be here today. Um, I did give everyone a flyer. Uh, we would like to invite the mayor and board and our community to come out to our Oktoberfest that we're having, uh, on the bluff, October the 24th, from 9:00 a.m. to, to four, uh, to 2:00 p.m., excuse me. Uh, it's gonna be about awareness, but also we wanna make it about the community having fun. So we have some games and other things that we have in place for entertainment. So we hope to see you, some of you there if you have an opportunity. Uh, today I'm here.
Thank you. That's a great event and we're, uh, looking forward to great participation.
And I just wanna thank you all for giving us opportunity to use the bluff as well. So, uh, we try to make sure that the senior community gets out, uh, that they're connected in the community. So this is one of the things that we do. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have two requests. I would like to start by, um, uh, the first request is to attend the National Council, the National, um, uh, date, Adult Daycare, um, Conference. It's in Chicago, Illinois, and it's on October the 22nd through 20th. And my reason for wanting to attend is because there are major cuts that are coming down the line. And I would like to be in a greater, a better position, uh, with going to this conference, seeing what other agencies are doing, what they have to offer. With Chicago being a, a larger city, uh, there is, um, there, there is resources being available to us to go to other sites, seeing what they have, things of that nature. And also the conference itself to see what software, what are they're doing to make the program, their program better. So I am looking to receive that information and see what is available for, uh, the, the Natchez Senior Center. We provide service Monday through Friday to our participants. Uh, it's one step before they go, uh, to be institutionalized. So we're trying to make sure that we can prevent that for a longer period of time. And I think we're doing a great job at it. It's just because of all the cuts, everybody feels that their position is very important. So, uh, we can feel the pressure from it. So I want to, um, find ways to maneuver in, you know, the center and making sure that when they do come in, they don't find anything if I can help it. Uh, not to say they won't, but I, my, my desire is to make the Natchez Senior Center the best place for the Natchez community, uh, Natchez Adams community to come and, uh, participate in activities. You know, just getting out the house, enjoying yourself and finding things that you like to do. We don't, uh, we don't force anything on you. You decide what you wanna do when you're there and we give you a calendar of activities that you can, uh, participate in throughout the day. So what is the pleasure?
Well, it's a pleasure of the board. Uh, motion made by Alderwoman Hall and seconded by Alderwoman Irving.
Thank you.
Discussion? Yes, Alderwoman Smith.
So, um, is it coming up? Have you already gotten your reservations and all that? We have one and I guess my point is we've asked everybody to be mindful of our spending on travel and we have one in Mississippi. Mississippi Association of Adult Daycare Services.
Yes, ma'am.
That I know is good. Like we go to the Mississippi one for us.
Yes.
That's, I just.
Yes.
Chicago is an expensive trip.
Yes, ma'am. It's, uh, an expensive trip.
Has it already been paid for?
I did, uh, request from the mayor and Ms. Megan if it was okay for me to go ahead and book the room because of the, uh, deadline that was there. So it was okay based upon what the, uh, approval or not approval is today. So I'm here just to see if you all would allow me the opportunity to go. Yes.
And there was a deadline to, to, uh, apply, correct?
Well, the deadline was for the hotel stay. Uh, I'm waiting for today to go back and book the, the venue, the, uh, for the conference itself. So once I know, you know.
That we approved today.
Yes, I'm going back.
Yes, Alderwoman Smith.
Plane ticket?
Um, uh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. No, I did not move on that.
It's just so late. I mean, I'm, it's gonna be expensive.
Well.
Um, yes, Alderwoman Hall.
I, I think Ms. Monroe just made a valid, um, discussion as to why she's asking to go on the trip. There have been federal cuts everywhere.
It's trillion-dollar cuts, yeah.
Adult daycare, which is what our Senior Citizens Center is.
Yes.
And it's also the final step before someone goes into a nursing home. Keep them active and productive.
And going, yes.
Without going to the last resort of a nursing home.
Thank you. Alderwoman Smith.
I know everybody mentioned Mississippi might be behind, but I guarantee you their Association of Adult Healthcare Services knows the upcoming federal rules too and state rules. State rule are important too with the money you get from the state.
Yes.
Drop it. I know we outvoted, but.
Um, I, I will ask the question. Um, I was not, I was not aware of the spring conference. Uh, have we participated in the Mississippi, uh, conference in the past?
Uh, in, we, we have participated with Southwest Planning and Development.
Yeah.
But, um, conferen- conference is based upon what they need to provide services for. And so this is based on adult daycare itself. Those standards, I have the standards. I have those things, but I wanna see the niches, what you have to offer your site. And then it's on a larger level. So it's, I'm on a small level, but I can take what they have and I can maximize it here. And so that's what I'm looking for. I mean, that's my desire. I understand if it's not approved, but I, that is the desire.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, Alderman Frazier?
Ms. Monroe, you, uh, you say that this is, this is binding to, to your job, right?
Yes, I feel it is. I wanna see how we can better, uh, help the, the adult daycare services provided, that we provide through Medicaid, through P D D, how we can help advance it, but also keep it in place and stabilize it because we're making, there are so many changes coming down. They're coming down constantly. And so as they're changing, I have to do a lot of communication and I have to send it back for approval and I have to wait and they want something else and I have to do that. I have to do the next thing. So it's just basically, I want the niches so that when, when they do get my information, everything is basically in place. They may find this or that, but hopefully it won't be to the extreme where I have to write these long pages. So, yes.
And just let me say this. The majority of your fund is federal fund, correct?
It is.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Um, I, I think we've had discussions.
And I think we have.
Call the question.
Okay. Will we read for the vote?
I'm ready for the vote.
Okay.
All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes, the ayes do have the motion. The ayes do have it.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe.
I just wanna say I do wanna make you all proud of the Natchez Senior Center. I know there are things I wanna see changed there. So I do have a vision for this place. I just need to make sure of things.
I know you do. Yes.
I just wanna say that this is not personal. I want you to be educated, but I feel like we can do that through our associations.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I think Alderwoman Smith does bring up a good point. We do need to look more to our local organizations here within the state of Mississippi.
Yes.
Uh, going forward, we do.
But all of our organizations don't provide what's needed. They do not.
Well, we'll, we'll make sure we're looking into that more and more going forward. Cause we're all having to watch our budgets.
I'm just putting it out there. It does not.
Thank you. Now the next item. Yes. Ms. Monroe?
I was looking to, um, hopefully get approval for, uh, request permission to complete a new credit app for wholesale janitorial supply company. It's in Bastrow, Louisiana. I wanna say this. I'm not trying to move service from local, but there are some things I think if I, a few things that I, I saw that I would like to try from them that, um, I felt would benefit the Natchez Senior Center. We are purchasing locally, but I want to at least look at these, these products if that's o- okay, if it's approved.
Yes.
I don't think this requires board approval.
Oh, it does not.
It does not. If that's city clerk.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, that is true.
Thank you.
I, I think Alderwoman Hall is exactly right. And I would say, uh, uh, I would say this. We always want to shop locally.
Yes, sir.
As our first option.
Yes.
We understand sometimes there are items that are not available locally, either the particular item needed or at the cost that is needed to be competitive. And we have to do what we have to do as a business would do. But in all cases, I like to, and we have seen success, where we ask the local vendor to meet that other price, to make that product available.
Yes.
And when that can be done, we would like to see that done.
Yes, sir.
All right. Ms. Monroe, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good job you're doing.
Thank you.
All right. We will now move on. Uh, Ms. Tawana Williams, uh, had a conflict this morning. She asked me to go ahead and present this for her. Uh, as you know, we have, uh, several grants working for our workforce development program and we have a heavy equipment class that is, uh, uh, opening up and, and having a lot of interest. We do need an operations instructor. She has interviewed a gentleman, I believe his information has been made available to all of you, Mr. Kennedy Jackson. And his, uh, uh, his conditions will be the same as other instructors that have been hired and all within the grant. And so I need to just ask, what is the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
A motion has been made by Alderman Davis and seconded by Alderwoman Hall. I'm trying to hear everybody at the same time. I'm sorry. We'll have discussion?
No, I, well, other than.
He appears to be very qualified.
He does.
And I'm very grateful that Ms. Williams is keeping all of this going and.
Absolutely.
And things going so well.
He, Ms. Mayor, I just wanna say Kennedy has served the city well and, um, he will continue to do so in this capacity as well.
Yes.
He would do so in this capacity as well.
I'll call for the question.
I, uh.
Yes, Alderman Frazier? Yes, sir.
Let me say this.
Yes, Alderman.
Mr., Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Right. He work for the city.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, I just wanna know, is this gonna be a conflict? He work for the county.
Yeah, he's retiring.
Is he retired or what? Somebody explained to me, cause, uh.
I believe he's in the process.
He's in the process.
He's in the process of retiring. Oh, okay. Well, I'm through.
Thank you. You raise a good point. Thank you. At that, at that, I will now call for the question.
Call.
And we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, we will now, uh, go to city official reports. Alderwoman Hall, you're recognized.
My report, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Uh, we now will go to Alderman Frazier.
Yes, uh, my report is just that, uh, over the, the past week or so, we've been having a lot of shootings and stuff. Uh, I attended the, uh, football game in Alcorn and that was a tragic event up there. But it can happen on any campus or school campus in America. Uh, I was talking to the mayor and I was explaining it to him. We gonna have to tighten up on somehow, uh, events. We're gonna have to start providing more security because we are just was fortunate this week that we had an event at North Natchez, which turned out to be very beautiful. We didn't have no kind of incidents or anything. The police department was, was, I would give him a big shout out, the sheriff's department, the Concordia Parish Police Department, the highway patrol. Everybody's right there. And this is the kind of event that we need in our community. We don't need to be pushing one way or the other because like I say, it could have happened in Natchez, but it didn't. And a lot of this stuff, people's, I don't know what's wrong with these kids now, but a lot of this stuff, people, it started on, it started with the parents. But, and we, as we as parents and, you know, like, we as parents now, like me, the older parents, we're getting old now. And we try to tell kids something now, they, they look at you like you're crazy, but they gonna do what they wanna do. And, and I told Mr. Mayor, the events that we have, start having in the city of Natchez, we gonna have to put a tight rein on it. And I know that Sheriff Travis Patton, he gonna be on point with everything that we do from now on in. I just want, like I say, I just don't want this kinda incident to happen in Natchez and to happen in Leland. That was, and that was very sad in Leland. You got six people get killed.
Yeah.
Just, it's just foolishness and nonsense. And a lot of this stuff is done, a lot of your kids don't even know what it's about. What, what it started about? They say, I don't know. But it gets so now people that everybody is scared to go out to eat. They scared to take their family anywhere. And then, and also you got people now, everybody got a gun because they afraid. And they, and, and like I say, people not gonna hesitate to do anything. So I would just like to say to our citizens, be more vigilant with your kids. And we, and like I say, keep our community safe. And, uh, if you, and like, and to go back to the old saying, the police saying, if you see something, say something. Just don't, just don't stand idly by and do nothing. As a citizen, you can pick that phone up and you can call anybody. You can call 911 or call somebody else. So, Mr. Mayor, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Frazier. And we appreciate you, uh, for bringing that, uh, very important issue forward. Alderwoman Smith, we recognize you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I wanted to address our N C P C appointments. I know we interviewed six candidates on H 28, um, the tourism committee. I think participating, was there anyone else at that?
I believe it was, uh, the three, the three Aldermen that served on the tourism committee were there.
Um, yeah.
And it.
Alderman Maroney was there.
Alderman Maroney was not.
Wait, no, no.
Oh, okay.
That was a special call meeting, but, uh, we did have a quorum counting.
I was on the line.
Yes.
I was on the line.
Alderman Irving was on the line.
I hope you're not asking for this today. I mean.
Uh, so I've got, um, two that withdrew. That was, um, Ms. Lockoff and Mr. Williams. And so we have three left. Sheila Duffy Lerman, Fred Marsalis, and Donna Sessions. We have two.
Actually four. I think Daniel did on.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, Daniel get on. I heard him run down. Um, I know we, we have two openings now. We have one that will be coming. But, um, I would just like the motion that we, um, that I, I'll nominate Sheila Duffy Lerman and Fred Marsalis for those two open positions.
Second.
A motion has been made by Alderwoman Smith and seconded by Alderwoman Irving.
I don't want, it's the second.
Alderwoman Irving, you're recognized.
And I think that's so that we can have a discussion.
You're recognized.
Um, since we didn't have everyone available, I wanna be fair about the situation. If, um, you feel, and I know you do, because I wouldn't wanna vote either. You were not at the meeting to hear this.
But I've seen all of it.
Everyone has seen.
And I've talked to several of them.
Again, I just want it fair process.
It is.
I mean, because Alderman Frazier wasn't there.
I'm good with the point.
I don't know whether or not he did, but with the appointees, I don't have a problem. That's why I second the motion. But I also want to realize that as well.
Okay, Ms. Mayor.
Yes, Alderwoman Smith.
It's only a problem if you don't like the people that were on there. I mean, you just said, I'm not, I'm fine because I like them. But, I mean, that's to me, that's.
I just said I did not have a problem.
Well, we do have a motion. Properly seconded, discussion. Alderwoman Hall.
I've had some questions that have not been addressed.
Okay.
Yes, Alderwoman.
Those are the kinds of things we need to.
Alderwoman Hall, I do for, and I know what you're referring to. I want to for transparency to let everyone know over the last few weeks, we have actually had delay on this because, uh, the Visit Natchez N C P C board votes on the appropriation of marketing funds for various organizations. And the question was raised whether someone serving in the capacity as a member of the board, as a commissioner, uh, by recusing themselves, uh, if that was, um, adequate for them to still be able to make, uh, these, uh, funding allocations. So we went to the Ethics Commission. Our city attorney worked with us. Uh, and we also had the help of a former city attorney, Walter Brown, who, uh, has served as a former chairman of the Ethics Commission in the past. And, uh, what we, uh, determined was that it is in fact improper for any organization to be funded from funds, marketing funds from Visit Natchez, if a member of that organization also serves as a commissioner. Uh, this is actually, uh, something that we then discussed with every candidate so that they would be made aware that should they be appointed, that any organization they were a member of could not receive funds going forward now that this has been brought to our attention. Um, it's why Terrell Williams withdrew his, uh, application because he, uh, sees that the Pilgrimage Garden Club, of which he is a member, may in the future request funds. This is why Sarah Lindsay Lockoff was, uh, also withdrew her application because as we all know, she's very active with Live at Five. Mr. Marsalis said that he wanted very much to serve the city, even if that meant losing the funds that M D P Reach Nonprofit Weekend and. and Scholarship Foundation receives. And so he has been made aware that as a commissioner, MDP Fitness will no longer be able to receive, and I'm sorry, it's MDP Reach, it's the nonprofit, not the business. They will no longer be able to receive any funds. Also, um, we had no problem, there is no conflict with Daniel Idon, there's no conflict with Sheila Lerman. There uh could have been one with Donna Sessions because she is a member of the Natchez Garden Club. She reported that uh the Garden Club is willing to forego any support from Visit Natchez should she be selected to serve. I'm being just totally transparent. We also uh looked at existing members of the NCPC. John Grady Burns is a, has been a member of Y'all Means All.
Mm-hmm.
And so he has very recently resigned from Y'all Means All uh because he is wanting to serve the city and continue serving as a commissioner. And so all of this has been conveyed through the attorneys so that everything can be uh proper. And so the two candidates that Alderwoman Smith has put forward, both uh uh, and that would be Fred Marsalis and Sheila Lerman.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderwoman Hall.
There are three vacancies, aren't there?
There are only two. Uh, Lance Harris and Helen Moss Smith. Uh, those are the two vacancies at the current time. The others are uh Ginny Gado, John Grady Burns, uh Robbie Cade Furd, and Ms. Barbara Bruce. And those four are continuing to serve. And so the, it is a commission of six, so this will get them to uh back to six. Yes. Any further conversation or discussion?
Thank you for that transparency.
Certainly, Alderwoman Hall. And thank you for making sure we are all doing things the proper way.
Dan, right.
Yes, Alderman Maroney.
I'd just like to say the two candidates that uh have been put forth uh right now, I think both would do very well on the commission. I'd be happy to have both of them on that commission. And I think that Fred Marsalis's uh actions of foregoing funding for his event are commendable. I think that really indicates a strong desire and a real commitment to serve and serve.
John Grady Burns also.
Yes.
That goes a long way.
And to, and Mr. Williams.
It, it, it really does uh uh speak to the uh um, the quality of all of these individuals and the character. And yes, we're very grateful for John Grady Burns's leadership. I believe uh going forward, he just sees the importance of Visit Natchez in marketing the city and uh, and is willing to make these sacrifices so that he can serve. I want to also say this. This has been an opportunity to learn more about the system, even for us. Uh, we have had a very active commission now that has uh been in place without change for the vast majority of the last number of years, all the way back to 2016. Um, it is only recently, you know, that we have had some vacancies because people have, you know, timed out. Um, I know you get tired, it's a volunteer position. And uh we just appreciate those who want to step forward. But also, I want to use this as a time to really better inform our public. Uh, people think that the government, we, the Mayor Board of Aldermen, direct all of the marketing of Natchez and our uh events. In fact, many people think that we actually uh put these events together and make them all happen. We actually don't. And the Visit Natchez Board, NCPC, is established by state charter. It is uh appointed by this mayor and board. But those individuals make key decisions on all of the marketing. And I encourage individuals who have questions about tourism in Natchez and about marketing for tourism in Natchez to uh be in touch with Lindsay Gilbert, who is the acting director for Visit Natchez and those commissioners, uh because uh your feedback is very important to them. Also, I want to say, we are coming off last year, a record year for tourism in Mississippi. Very soon, we will have the numbers for Natchez. But it appears that things are definitely going in the right direction. And going into this fall, let's make sure we have a good fall tourism season. Now, all that said, any further- Yes?
When is this effective?
It would be effective today. Uh, do we have any further discussion? The question's been called, we will proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Alderwoman Smith. Uh, any further report for you? Okay, thank you so much. We now, Alderwoman Irving.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I want to begin um by saying October is being recognized as breast cancer awareness. And so we just want to keep that on the forefront of our um, our thoughts and our, our um, our thoughts. You know, remembering those that are going through, those that have lost their battle, and the survivors. Want to keep that in mind. Um, also, um, I want to piggyback on uh Natchez's homecoming. The Homecoming Week was just phenomenal. Um, we saw our community come together, I mean, we saw in a big way that our parents, our entire community was out to support the youth in our community. That was such um, a such a amazing and a, and a great feeling to actually observe. I had so many comments from our senior members of our community saying I was able to sit out comfortably and watch the parade. I mean, it was just beautiful, simply beautiful. Thanks to all the participation, all the hard work from the school board members, the superintendent, Mr. Tony Fields, the deputy superintendent, our, our superintendent, um, Ms. McDonald Green. Um, thanks to all them and their staff over there who helped make that parade and homecoming night a true success. It was awesome. Um, also, I would like to see, and we need more of that. We need more of that. We need more of the community rallying around our youth in our community. We truly need more of that. I also attended the Fall Carnival at Cathedral. It was truly a success, um, going there this year, um, just watching the change that has taken place over the years. But again, in that space as well, we saw the community come together and rally around the youth in that, in that, in that school district there and, well, school there, and um being very supportive. It was a great day and I'm sure a great weekend as well. I attended Saturday and not on Sunday. But it was truly um great to be in the midst of the members of that community. Um, I also have an announcement, NAACP will have a forum on um Thursday, October sixteen, at the Safe Room at six P.M. It's inviting all of our members of the community to come out. Um, you have the opportunity to speak with um our state representative, um, direct different organizations will be there, Natchez Housing Authority will be there. Um, our Natchez PD, I'm hoping, would be there. Um, our sheriff department would be there. There are so many members that are on the roster for attendance. So anyone that would like to come out and join um the organization, the NAACP, and their forum that we're having, having on um Thursday, October sixteen, twenty twenty-five. Um, at six P.M., that's at the Safe Room, six P.M. So I hope to see you there. Um, Mayor, we brought up with tourism, and you hear me say this over and over again. Um, what updates can we hear on manufacturing industry? Um, and my reason for asking is because that's what we're facing in our community. What are we doing? I mean, our economic development director, come and give us some update. What are we trying to do as far as recruiting? Again, we see, and just a few days ago, we read about, what is it, drat? That's with the wood, and that's our main industry here. How is that affiliated with Adams County? I know it's in Gloucester.
Drat.
Drat. How is it that that's, I mean, our number one industry here is wood? And so how is that affiliated? I just want to ask these questions.
Happy to, happy to. I, I want to say, you know, it's very frustrating because of the competition across our state and our country. It's very hard to talk about things publicly. And uh there are so many things I wish I could share now. Uh, for example, keeping the Ola secret for a year, knowing Marriott was ready to, to move forward was very difficult for me. Until they were ready to announce, we couldn't say anything. We're sitting on several things right now that we cannot announce, but when the time comes, people will be very excited. I will say that just this morning, I was actually uh texting uh someone that I had a meeting with two weeks ago, uh, thanks to Chandler Russ. Uh, very large industrial prospect uh is the top finalist. Uh, I can't say anymore. I can't say anymore. We also, I think everyone's speculating about a meeting we had with the Mr. Development Authority a couple of weeks ago. Uh, in that meeting, we actually discussed not one, but three very large opportunities for Natchez. That's all I can say.
Okay.
But we are, of course, always happy to have Mr. Russ come and give a report to this board, and we can ask him to do that.
Please, please. Can we get in for our next meeting, if all possible?
We sure can.
And again, I mean, again, I have so many members of our community saying, and we love tourism, there's nothing wrong with that. But we all know that tourism does not provide the income for um all families. Okay, because of the positions that they work, we understand it all too well, but it makes up Natchez. And we have no problem with that.
Also, great jobs coming in retail. Let's not forget the two retail developments.
That's true, that's true.
I think over the next year, we're gonna see some history being made here. We already are, just can't wait. I see Mr. Rutter nodding back there. He knows things that we don't know because he's actually working with some of these companies as they begin preparing for the uh process of- He, he actually pulled me aside last week and he said, my goodness, I know people doubt you, but you're exactly right, it is booming here. He said, I just wish people to see what I see. Is that not exactly, Mr. Rutter, what you shared with me last week? It is phenomenal.
Well.
Mr. Mayor.
All right.
I'm not finished.
Alderwoman Irving?
Okay. And so again, with that, you know, Alderman Fraser, I lost my train of thought. But um I, I did want to say that um, I really lost my train of thought.
Hey, we can come back around to you.
But let me just say this, I also want to inquire, what is our Christmas parade date? And I was thinking, Mr. Maroney-
First Saturday in December.
First Saturday in December.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, okay. Getting that for our Girl Scout troop.
Lighting of the Christmas tree is the Saturday before.
Okay.
Saturday after Thanksgiving.
Saturday after Thanksgiving, okay. And the reason why I'm inquiring, because I have joined Girl Scout troop again and we're getting our girls with dates, so that the earlier we have these dates, we'll be able to have participation in them as well. Okay, and um, that ends my report, Mr. Mayor. And if I can think of that, then I will come back um to that question. And I know I was dealing with um, um, industry.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Davis, your report?
Not that much. Uh, I attended the massive uh conference uh not too long ago. Before I went to the massive conference, I never, I didn't think it was gonna be very informative, which it, which I found out it was though. And uh, at them conference, they had about seven uh state legislators uh at the conference. And uh, they, they talked, and they also the workman com- uh, Mr. Orby, it's all of them know the mayor, you know. And uh, it's a lot of information they put out and then, uh, I met with a lot of companies down at, at the conference, talk about, and talk about a lot of insurance, uh, how they can make out insurance cheaper, but I'm gonna reach, yeah. I'm gonna reach out to uh, what's his name, Freddie Parker?
Mm-hmm.
They want, they want to get with him and talk about something, you know. But uh, it, it, it was a good conference and uh, the insurance committee, I think uh, I think I should go to the next one, when we have another one. It, it put out, they put out a lot of good uh information on things. They talk about PTSD, you name it, it's so much. And uh, that's a good conference, uh, hemorrhoid resource, whoever do the work with this comp, they should be there. And uh, and also, uh, Ms. uh, the little girl, uh-
Irving.
Uh, Malia Irving, she won.
Oh.
She, uh, little Miss Colleen, she won.
Okay, congratulations.
Yeah. I was thinking about bring her up on the board the next board, uh, evening meeting, so y'all can see her.
Absolutely.
Great, that's great.
Mr. Mayor, I know where it was.
Ends my report.
Thank you, Alderman.
Backtrack to me.
Back to you, Alderwoman.
And I was just gonna say, with inflation, the way everything is, you know, everybody is um, is feeling it. They're actually feeling it. You're feeling it at the gas pump, you're feeling it at the grocery store, you know, um. And, and, and that's the burden that has been placed on us. That's the burden that has been placed on us, and I know everyone is affected by that.
That's correct, thank you.
And that ends my report.
Thank you. Alderman Maroney?
All right. Um, of course, it's Bling Fest for a week, so I'm sure lots of folks will be getting out, doing fun things. Just want to remind everyone to be careful. Um, I had a question about, we've got a bunch of new computers for the city recently. And I don't believe those have been installed yet. Um, I think we approved, did we not, a contract with-
With it?
Did we need to do anything to proceed with that, or is the IT department able to just execute that contract, or do we need to vote on anything else here to have that happen?
I tell you, um, uh, why don't you just go ahead and make a motion so we'll have it?
I'd like to make a motion.
But we have already given the approval, you go ahead.
We had a ten thousand dollar contract with um, um-
Net link.
Net link voice out of Jackson, who does a lot of IT work.
Would they do it anyway? Yeah.
And it was to install the new, about eighty-four computers, which comes to about a hundred and twenty-five dollars per computer, which is cheap.
Yeah.
It's really cheap, because a lot of work involved.
And in the budget.
I want to make a, a motion that we make sure that they're able to execute that contract and get that stuff done.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion made by Alderman Maroney, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. The discussion?
Yeah.
Well, yes, Alderman Davis.
We make decisions on IT department, we got the department head being here?
I don't know where he is.
We need to know what's going on.
It's a question that we, we get this question.
All right, I'll call for the question on that motion. I'll call for it.
Is he here today?
I think, Mr. um-
Yes, Alderwoman.
He's already here before and made that request.
Um, we will make, we will double, we will uh, we will double check on that at this time. Let's just call a question on the motion.
Call.
Will proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Will, proceed with your report.
Yeah, lots of events coming up, the weather's nice, uh, we may catch some rain this weekend. Uh, but if you want to see hot air balloons, get out early in the morning, uh, that's the best time. And uh, in the evenings, we actually flew last night and flew this morning. We've got a few pallets in town, so there are a few balloons going out, maybe two windy tonight, but uh, and then there's lots of other stuff coming up. There's lots of events every weekend, we've got chili cook-off coming up, we've got Angels on the Bluff, we've got the Christmas parade, lighting of the Christmas tree. I encourage the people of Natchez, don't complain about, there's never anything to do here. There's lots of stuff to do here.
That's true.
Live at Five every Friday, it's for everybody, it's free. It's a wonderful time, get out and enjoy your time.
Well said.
That's it for me.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderwoman.
I just want to piggyback on what Alderman Fraser spoke about.
Yes.
The mass shootings. I think because of what did happen this, this past weekend with multiple campuses being involved in shootings, the Mississippi High School Athletic Association has banned tailgating.
Hmm.
Yep, maybe.
Wow.
Oh, my goodness.
Yep.
That's news to me.
It was on the news.
Hmm, that is news to me.
I didn't hear that, but wow. I'm not disputing it, I mean, and you see all the reasons as to why. Look what happened in Jackson.
We now will uh go to the city courts report. Madam clerk?
Okay, um, first item I have is request for approval of the first October twenty-five claims document.
Was the pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Uh, a motion made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderman Davis. I do want to make uh mention, there is one item on the claims docket that is being taken off. That is two hundred dollars to Michael Wilson. We have found a way for those services to be in contract.
Okay, well, Mr. Mayor.
And that will save the city going forward.
Well, thank you, because that was what I had, I, thank you.
We had actually had, already going into the new budget, uh, determined that that was a change that needed to be made, and that is being made.
Okay.
Uh, those are for some services that predated this contract. Those are for some services that predated this contract with the city that were already being taken, taking place within our talk program. And now that has just been brought under his overall contract.
Well, thank you.
Yes, certainly. Further discussion?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to look here. I'm looking here for, on page one of our claims docket.
Yes.
This would help with travel and training. I don't want to call her name, but it's phone reimbursement. And it's being taken out of training, travel and training. And so of the legislative, could that be somewhere else? Because when I added that up, that's a $600 savings that we could have in travel and training. Okay, and it's on page one.
I'll double check and make sure, but I believe that that's where that has historically been paid.
But that's, couldn't that go on to somewhere else?
We can look.
Okay, could that go somewhere else?
Okay.
What else is there I have here? I noticed that since we have... I just want to ask, on page five, professional services felt, and my question is, is it lawsuit that we may be encountering, we're being represented on?
I'm sorry, which page? I was trying to make a note on your last comment.
Okay, I apologize.
So, yeah, you're talking about, I'm sorry, page five, you said Phelps?
Yes.
That is correct. Those are lawsuits that they have provided counsel on in one way or another.
Against the city?
Those are usually labor law or employment-related lawsuits with the city or, you know, unemployment here and so forth, where we need representation.
Okay. I'm just questioning page 10. Our city employee, and it happened on Woodlawn. What is that? And it came out of a budget. It said maintenance at Woodlawn and North Union.
Right, so this gentleman actually has a contract with the city where he does grass cutting and weed eating and tree services all over the city in different areas. So, well, that shouldn't, he's not a city employee.
He's not a city employee?
No, this is an independent contractor.
Okay, he's a contractor, okay.
He's like a tenure that's.
But.
Unlimited resources.
No. Oh, that's the name of it? Okay, okay, okay. So, but what's being maintained on Woodlawn? That's what I'm trying to see.
So, again, I will have to see unless, do you, is it that? I'm sorry, Mr. Dollar.
Is the little medium thing in it where the flowers in? Okay, the little medium right there with.
Okay, but we have some of that in other communities, so we can get that maintained now in other areas. And my reason for asking, because there are other areas that does need to be cleaned. They put it down, you know, everybody got that, right?
Yes. So, is the tenure services there? You didn't do it correctly the first time. That's why we have weeds.
Alderwoman Hall, I believe he went back and addressed the area, but we can certainly work into that further.
That was my question to DNA today. We had on their list.
I know. And I thought about that this morning, actually, because we just, are the weeds, are the weeds coming back now?
It's filled with weeds.
Oh, my goodness.
They did not do it correctly the first time.
Okay, all right, well.
I didn't know, because I mean, there's several areas in other wards, and I'm not, and I'm just saying that need to be done. If we can get them to do that in other locations, then that would be great. That would help public works.
Well, I believe going forward, public works, they were just simply doing the initial landscaping. Public works will have to maintain it. But, you know, I need to get with Mr. Dollar on that. I hate to withhold payment, though, on a contractor, but if you're saying that the work was not done properly, and you want to do that, that is your prerogative as a board. Y'all, we need to, do we have any further, or do we have any further discussion?
No.
On the claims docket?
No.
Well, with that, I will then call for the question. Will proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Next item is request for approval of the first October 2025 mini claims docket.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Davis, Alderwoman Hall has seconded the motion. Do we have any discussion?
I did.
Yes, Alderwoman Irving?
Okay, I just wanted to ask, Emory Ad Paul's Maintenance LLC, and what was the location they repaired those potholes? What was the location?
I would have to say that is Mr. Brian Emery, who is doing a fantastic job catching up the city on various pothole repairs. He's also working for the Natchez Water Company. I do not have all of the locations, but we could certainly provide that for you.
And the reason why.
The city clerk could provide the invoice for you at a later date.
And the reason why I'm asking, I just saw pothole repairs in this company here. I did not realize, because those are the big cuts that they've made, that they're going and filling in. Is that what?
Not to be confused with work that has been done by Atmos and by their contractor. But if you will recall, we had a contractor who worked a lot with our Natchez Water Works and also with our Public Works Department, who passed away a while back. It had been very difficult to find someone satisfactory to replace that person. We were able to locate Mr. Brian Emery, who is actually from, I believe, Brookhaven. He has now filled that void. And if you are noticing, as you drive around town, pothole repairs are being made. They're being made in a very good, to a very good quality. And we, every day, handle calls at City Hall for potholes. We report them to Public Works. Individuals can also, and Alderman, you know this, you can report those to Public Works. They go on the list. And we do our best to get around and maintain the streets and fill those potholes. That is what that invoice is.
I just saw that amount and just questioning.
Okay. All right, any further discussion?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderwoman Hall?
Oh, everybody who's listening here, we sit on top of water, so we're gonna have potholes.
Yeah.
Canal Street was a canal. We're gonna have potholes in Natchez. And like you say, make a work order to Public Works and get on the list. I do that all the time.
Well said. Thank you, Alderwoman Hall. We will call for the question. We'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item?
Next item is request for approval of the September 2025 personnel report.
Was the question. Alderwoman Hall has made the motion, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Alderman Frazier?
On this, this time, fire report.
Yes.
Chief Brink, maybe, maybe you can help me out on this. I have employee 30322. It's supposed to be a detention officer. He resigned, but I'm looking at his salary was $1,2949. $79. You gotta type or what?
Part-time.
Part-time. I didn't know we had part-time detention officer. Yeah, okay. I'm through with you.
Okay, Alderman Frazier, thank you. Any further discussion?
All questions.
The question has been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item?
Next item is request for approval of the municipal compliance questionnaire for fiscal year 2025 pursuant to the Mississippi Code 1717348.
So moved. Motion made by Alderwoman Hall. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Maroni. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Alderman Frazier?
On this, this thing, I would just wish that city clerk would call us or he'd sit down and talk to us. Because some of the stuff, you know, we just signed it off on without you really getting into reading it.
Well, this went out in your packets last week, and I'm available if you need to call me with questions, but this is something that is sent every year.
I know the call.
Yeah, it needs to be discussed.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Frazier. Alderwoman Irving?
I did. I was looking at number three, and it said, are municipal records open to the public? And they are. I guess it said, are meetings of the board open to the public? And they are. But what we did experience, and I heard from a lot of our constituents, when we were having our meetings, there were two or three meetings that took place during the budget session that were not videoed. And so the public was not, didn't have access to any, they could be invited to the meeting. However, they did not have access to any social media like what we're doing today. The videographer was not a part of it. And so I'm just saying, you know, that's not a guess if we're not adhering to every meeting that should have been recorded. These are just mine, if I could finish.
We don't record special call.
We don't, but it's a meeting. It's an open meeting. Are we not violating the open meeting?
Our Open Meetings Act does not require video. We did that as a courtesy, as a courtesy.
Okay, but let me ask you this.
Yes, Alderwoman.
Do we not think that decisions are being made, even though it's a special call meeting and it's something specifically? Do we not know that decisions are being made and it's being made? Most times, pretending to see the business, that's important for everyone to know. I mean, but I'm just saying, you said that they don't. If we are cutting back and we're finding waste, then this is something that we could add money to so that it could be possible. Is it a state law that it shouldn't be recorded, or I'm just asking?
I'm going to say, there is an expense to doing this, but we adhere to every letter of the state law. And we do this as a courtesy. In fact, other organizations in our region now are doing so following our lead. We've been, since the beginning of this administration, since COVID, very good about having this. But I would say that for us to, to have every meeting, I believe you would find that the pertinent meetings and in fact, budget meetings that you're referring to, including the public hearing, were, they were available. I would like for us to not get bogged down in this, because, you know, these are matters we can discuss, but we aren't going to resolve your, your concerns today. We might have difference of opinion, but we need to move on with our meeting.
Okay.
There was one other, just one quick point, since you record all the meetings, I mean, live stream, so you can get more followers.
I don't have to get more, that's not what.
But I mean, you do.
You, right? No, I do not. I do not. Okay, I do not. It's my, it's my campaign page that I record on.
And that's what I'm saying, they're gonna be on the board.
Okay.
And so you can.
All right, Sarah.
If we could, we need to, we need to move on. Alderwoman Irving, do you have any other questions?
It said, does the municipal clerk submit to the board monthly reports of expenditures against each budget? We do not get a monthly budget status report, and we should. I made a motion that we should get a monthly budget status report. What it will enable me, and I don't know about anyone else, but it will enable us to be able to be more prepared within a 72-hour period, receiving our packet on Friday, instead of having to call for it on Monday. That's a rush, because this is a very thick packet, as we can see. And we do want to be able to do what? Balance, saying that if we are approving the claims docket, we need to have the what? The budget status report so we can see. Not every month, and we should. Last month, we did not, we do not.
Madam Clerk, are we receiving the monthly budget status report?
Typically, yes. Now, I will say that it is the first meeting of every month for the previous month. I was out of the office at training last week and did not get that printed before I left town, because we still had the docket that was uncommitted. So it was going to throw numbers off. I did intend to print that this morning and bring it, and it did not happen. So this month, you did not. Typically, you do. Occasionally, it happens where it does not make it in the packet, and it's delivered to the meeting.
But it's no good at the meeting when we're coming in for a discussion. And I can't speak for everyone else, but I can only speak for myself.
Yes, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Frazier, you're recognized.
She's been requesting this for the last two months. So, you know, just give her what she wants.
Yes, sir.
We do it then.
Yes. Thank you, Alderman Frazier. Do we have any further discussion?
All questions.
The question has been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Next item is a request for approval to publish the solid waste revenues and expenses for fiscal year 2025.
So moved. Motion has been made by Alderwoman Hall.
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Discussion? This is the disaster preparedness conference being held in Beauvais, and it is hosted by several different states.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm going, I'm so sorry, I'm going by our agenda, and I was asked a question. If you could, please specify exactly, I misunderstood.
Yeah, now, I had the publication of the solid waste revenues and expenses. It was on my report, but somehow or another, didn't make it on the agenda.
I'm so sorry, I didn't have this report. Okay, I'm looking at this. And so approval, publishing of solid waste revenues and expenses, we have a lot going on, y'all. I will now entertain the motion.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Smith and seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Discussion? We will call for the question.
Go.
We will proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Okay, next item is travel requests, and we have two of them, and you'll see that these were done a little differently. I know the mayor brought up a while back, several weeks ago, discussing a new travel policy. And part of that proposed travel policy, and I think it's actually back on the agenda for him to discuss today, was this new form, and I think, hopefully, y'all will find it helpful. It just provides some more upfront information when we have employees requesting to travel with justification letters, anticipated expense, copies of agendas, et cetera. So, the first travel request for today is for Mr. Justin Dollar and Mr. James Johnston to attend the disaster leadership conference, which will be held, excuse me, in Biloxi, with dates of travel from November 11th through November 14th.
So moved. Second. A motion has been made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Discussion? Yes, Alderwoman Smith?
You said it's in Mississippi?
It is, it's in Biloxi.
Okay, and just quickly, I certainly understand Justin wanting to go, James, would you mind just explaining your, and if I missed that on the form? Is this form in here?
Well, I kind of combined it together.
I was just curious of his, not, that the first of it?
Yeah.
Okay, you handled that part of it. I think it's good for the public to know that as well.
I agree with you.
I'll let you think about that. I appreciate you letting me know.
Yes, Alderman Davis?
If we do vote on this travel request form, if that's the way we're going, I think if you're in two separate departments, your own department, you do it, each department is putting in a trap request instead of it combined.
Okay.
Okay.
Moving forward.
All right, thank you. Further discussion? Well, the question has been called. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item?
Okay, the next item is request for approval for Mr. Mingo Tingle and Ms. Kaitlin McDonald to attend the Deep South Planning Conference, which will be held in Hattiesburg from October 28th through October 30th.
Motion has been made by Alderwoman Hall and seconded by, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Maroni. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Alderman Frazier?
I, Ms. McDonald, I like, why is she attending the conference?
I'm actually gonna ask if it's okay with you all, if Mr. Tingle comes up to answer that.
Good afternoon, Mr. Tingle.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. The reason why, the reason why Caitlin were requesting this is that Caitlin has never received any training in the seven years that she's been here. So this would be a very good introduction to that. This is the Mississippi and Alabama chapters of the American Planning Association. We'll have, the keynote speaker will be the director-at-large of the APA, which is the national conference.
Let me say this. She is a secretary. We do not have a deputy city planner. Now, I can't remember the board voting on anyone being a deputy planner. Going to think, you got, in order to be a deputy city deputy planner, you got. It goes, then you got, in order to be a deputy city deputy planner, you got to have a, a bachelor's degree or something. So, she's not a deputy planner, and she's a secretary, that's fine, but she is not, we don't have a, a deputy city planner. No, no, she, no, no, it's not, you say the clerk, but that's not a clerk. The thing says, no, no, we didn't, we did not vote on deputy city planner. We do not have a deputy city planner.
I have a comment as well. I'm just waiting on him to finish.
So, if, if, I don't have a problem with she going, but she's not a deputy city planner.
There is nothing here indicating that she is a deputy city planner.
Right here, Mr. Mayor.
We, we did that our last meeting.
It wrote right here.
We did this.
Deputy city planners. We did not vote on deputy city planner. We don't have a deputy city planner.
And Alderman Fraser is correct.
If we did have one, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Fraser is correct. And, and I, and I would, I believe that should be, uh, that should be revised.
Right.
She is the administrative assistant.
Yeah, yeah.
And she also is the very first person, every person who comes into the office sees, uh, and she works for the public wonderfully, and I'm all for her training, but it is important that her, her proper title be used. And it came to the board, and, and I think we need to give our city planner some grace, because he is the new city planner.
We did, we did this, Mayor.
We didn't vote for a deputy city planner.
When did we do?
I, I don't, I, I. No, 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 we, we.
If we could, if we could, I, I would say let's clarify that topic. Uh, as of right now, I don't remember.
We did not.
That actually being a part of the motion, but we can look back and see.
But she.
But in the meantime, could we approve this travel and move on?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, just let me finish, I'm not finished.
Yes, Alderman Fraser.
I mean, just let me say this. I'm, I'm, she can go, I don't have a problem with it going, but we just, all I want to say, let's get some clarification, because if we gonna have a deputy city planner, we should have put it out to the public that we have a hold for a deputy city planner.
Absolutely.
In, in the conversation, let's move on.
Thank you, Alderman Fraser. Uh, I will call the question on the motion.
I know you might.
This is for travel. Anything else is a moot point, we've already had that discussion. This is now the approval for the travel, uh, to take place. And I think it's a valuable conference, and I'm very excited. Uh, Mr. Tingle, you're doing a great job. And a lot of work. And, uh, and I'm so grateful you also want your staff to receive training. We're moving in the right direction, thank you. I'll call for the questions. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motions indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item.
That is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Attorney, do you have a report?
No report.
I will say this, our attorney has been helping us on various items behind the scenes, and we're really grateful to you, uh, Mr. Attorney, for what you do, like to help our city. Uh, uh, sometimes we can't always discuss what the city attorney's doing, because it's the attorney, but we have a lot going on in the city. Uh, I have, I have a, uh, report. Uh, I'm going to actually get this out of the way first. Uh, everyone knows that I've been raising an issue for some time now about violent crime and the problems we're having, not only here in Natchez, our state. I've been very active with the Mississippi Municipal League, and also with our Board of Directors, our Legislative Committee. We actually, uh, had quite a discussion on this at a meeting of the Southwest Mayor's Association here just two weeks ago. What we are finding out as we meet with everyone from committee chair in the legislature, uh, chairman, actually, both House and Senate, we also have met with the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court. We've met with the President of the Bail Bondman Association. We have met with law enforcement. What we're finding is, is that we have a problem all across our state. And the problem is not one I don't know that the Mississippi Legislature can very easily fix, because a lot of it has to do with decisions that individual judges make all across our state, uh, what they are taught through the, uh, Judicial College. Also, the, uh, procedures that are in place through the Mississippi Supreme Court for judges to follow when they are, uh, giving bond to individuals. We are finding out also that, uh, there are loopholes where violent criminals can be released with charges pending. And more and more, we're finding that here in Natchez, for example, 80% of our crime is by repeat offenders. We have people on the streets that don't need to be on the streets. And it's not just in Natchez, it's all across the state. I will not name the cities whose mayors have reached out to me since I brought this forward, but you would be shocked at the cities across this state. Cities you wouldn't expect to have this problem, that are having this problem. Tomorrow, I will be meeting with the Legislative Committee. Uh, Alderman Smith, you're a member of that committee, and you've been involved in, uh, these meetings. Uh, I had a meeting with the attorney for the Mississippi Municipal League just yesterday, Mr. Troy Johnson. We are, in a way, we are at our wits' end. I'm not really sure how we're going to see this through. I think that a statewide commission needs to be formed to take a look at violent crime affecting our state. Because until we get crime under control in cities all across Mississippi and in various communities that are especially affected by this crime. Look at communities in the Mississippi Delta. Look at communities now in areas, you would be amazed at some of the areas in South Mississippi, North Mississippi, even East, it's North, East, South, and West. We've got to get serious about getting violent criminals off the street. I am going to give this more and more of my attention as mayor, as hard an issue as it is, but it has got to be solved. And ultimately, also, anyone who's making a vote in upcoming elections, next year's elections, elections yet to come in Mississippi, we vote on our judges. Make sure you're voting for judges who are serious about keeping violent offenders off the street and putting them behind bars where they belong. Never should an individual be in the line at Walmart having to deal with someone who may have murdered their family member. That's happened right here in Natchez. And never should one of our police officers be in a position of being attacked by someone who's been put in jail for the attempted murder of someone else just a few weeks prior. That should not happen here, that should not happen anywhere. And what happened this weekend, I want to tell you, look into those crimes, and I think you will see that the suspects are going to end up being second, third, or fourth repeaters. That's gotta stop in Mississippi. That's all I have to say about that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Irving.
I'm sitting here and I'm hearing you, and I agree with everything that you have said. But when you also ask them to look at poverty rate, because if you go back and you look at statistics, you can see that poverty.
Yes.
Low wages, Mississippi has not increased minimum wage in how many years? If we look at those kinds of things that were helped, and I'm not saying that's the total answer.
I need to continue, though, if I report, if I could. I want to say that's why we're working so hard on economic development, and that's why we need to see economic development happening all across the state. And I will agree with you on that, Alderman Irving.
Thank you.
Um, I do want to, uh, uh, bring up our, uh, proposed travel policy. This is in answer to our tightening of our budget and understanding that we need to really look at travel. Uh, actually, I personally have made travel on my own dime, because, uh, we're, we're just needing to be more and more careful. I would agree also with Alderman Smith's comments earlier. When we can find a conference in the state of Mississippi that is much more affordable to attend, then I would say, hey, let's look at that one. If we have to go at all, I'm all for training, I'm all for the networking. Um, there are very important conferences we have to go to. For example, the Small Town Conference this week, where we'll be having this discussion tomorrow. Uh, the Mississippi Municipal League. Conferences in education that our firefighters have to attend, our police officers have to attend, our city planner and others. But it is important going forward that those requests be made in writing, that all of the details be given upfront, that approval be given in advance, and that anyone not following this be ineligible for reimbursement of expenses. We can't be making expenses on travel without that travel first being approved by this board. Now, I know there are last-minute situations. I'm happy and have been known to call special meetings in order to get certain approvals made. We follow all the laws when we have a special meeting. The door is open, people can come if they want. But we have a process, let's make sure we're following it. All we're asking for is a justification letter, an estimated cost of travel, a copy of the agenda program, our invitation of what we're going to, and also submission properly to the Board of Aldermen and the mayor for approval. And, uh, and understanding that any unauthorized travel is at an individual's own personal expense and not subject to reimbursement. Um, I believe if we follow this, it's a very simple form, very simple process, it will take care of a lot of things. I'm going to ask also our department directors, and we will discuss this at our next meeting, make sure that when we are looking at travel, that number one, the travel is indeed necessary. It is going to have a benefit for the city of Natchez. We are not here to go on vacations on the city's dime. Not saying that that happens, but going forward, we need to avoid any possibility that someone could construe it as such. Also, make sure that that travel is as reasonable as possible when we are considering hotels, when we're considering travel, definitely state conferences, state precedents. Uh, I believe that we are finding more and more that state associations are rising to the challenge to have really great material. I, for one, am so impressed at the material that we see at conferences such as the Southwest Mississippi Plain Development District and the conference they participate in, the Plain Development District's Conference on the Coast. Great information. The Mississippi Municipal League, all of their meetings, great information. A lot of other organizations that we are a part of. The National League of Cities is valuable. I got valuable information on retail development, helping us now to have historic retail development in Natchez right now, even as we speak. Uh, connections made at the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative have been very important. A lot of major grants have come as a result of those meetings. And anytime we can get grants, and for instance, a new fire truck, uh, attending some of these meetings, I consider that important. Now, I have, I think, been on my soapbox enough, I think everybody gets the idea, Alderman Smith.
Thank you for taking it seriously and looking into ways we can be more efficient.
Oh, thank you. Well, Alderman Smith, I thank you as our senior statesman on this board for being able to make the brave calls that you have made. It's not always easy or popular, but we need to abide by it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I would like a motion to approve this travel request policy. It's very simple, it's very straightforward. Alderman Hall has made the motion. I have a second, Alderman Smith. Discussion on the, on the policy. Yes, Alderman Davis.
Well, I think it's good about the travel policy that's been in place, but if some departments, uh, travel been included in their grants already. And, uh, the thing about it, I looked at, you know, I look at the budget, wasn't there a little more budget though?
Yeah.
Well, I understand.
I'm not finished talking.
I understand, not over budget, I'm listening to you, Alderman Davis, I'm sorry.
Just like, uh, police, police, I'm just saying, you might have said it, I'll say it again. They have to get their, uh, trained, mandatory for them to get their trained, or their, uh, yeah, take their, like, fire, they have to get their, uh, training too. A certain amount, certain train they have to get, and then transit driver, they have to get their training. And, uh, if they're, because they mandated through, uh, Medicaid and Medicare, it's a certain amount of training they need to get though. And, and then like workforce development, their travel stuff is included in their budget too, so, uh.
That's exactly right. And this board will have the opportunity to make those decisions on case-by-case basis.
Yep.
So, we're not changing that, we're just making sure we have more documentation.
I think training is a good thing.
Oh, I, I believe in it all the time, Alderman Smith.
I think we're all in agreement, we think training is very important, but we also need to understand that any grant is taxpayers' money. They're not, it's not free money that comes out of the.
I didn't say it was a taxpayer, but I didn't say it was a free.
It just, I think we should be.
But it was included in the grant.
It's a federal grant, that's the whole United States.
Yes, Alderman Irving.
I just want to say, when we look at section, I think it's 21-3-5, I think that's the right one, it says it in our charter. And so, you know, we know these things. I don't think it's anything we have to vote on. I don't think it shouldn't be anything. We got a copy of it, we received it. I think that we all can adhere to it, it shouldn't even be a motion for this.
A motion has been made that we establish this travel policy, I understand what you're saying.
I mean, because.
But this will take a guesswork out. And if you want to vote against it, that's your prerogative. I'd like to call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Uh, the record shows we have one nay.
Two.
Two nays, and the rest are ayes. The motion passes four to ten. Thank you so much. We now, the next item, uh, Concordia Bank on Main Street in the past, uh, had an agreement to utilize parking, uh, there that the city owns right behind the NAIPAC building.
Mm-hmm.
Somewhere along the way, that actually, uh, uh, fell by the wayside. As parking is more and more limited downtown, the bank would like to resume use of that parking lot for the monthly sum of $125 a month. That is the amount that was paid in the past. We have a copy of that lease.
Mm-hmm.
I have not, uh, told them that we can do anything. I said, we will present this to the board for them to discuss. I would say this, um, if we do have money coming in for that parking area, and Bobby Dennis and I have met, uh, with, uh, Concordia Bank officials regarding this, um, I would like to see some funds go into NAIPAC to help with them, because things are becoming more and more expensive, and they, they, even though we're maintaining the building, there are different things that need to be done for the exhibits, and income could be good for them. Now, whether or not $125 a month is a fair amount, that is the amount that they were paying back in 2009.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, uh, and that would be subject to whatever the board thinks, you know, is fair or reasonable. Uh, so, this is for discussion, I'm not asking for a motion. If you want to make a motion, I just wanted you to see that this is being, that this is being requested.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, Alderman Fraser.
When did you talk to Mr. Dennis?
Uh, last week, I believe, we had our meeting, yes.
The only concern, only concern that I have is that if NAIPAC have any kind of exhibit thing, that, that parking lot probably would be full, that's the only problem, but other than that, I don't know.
He expressed a, uh, agreement to this.
Okay.
He said that we find that we're not having to use the parking lot that much, and a lot of their events are after I was.
Okay.
Where the bank is closed. Alderman Hall?
I think maybe, did you mention $125?
That is the amount they were paying.
The current lease stays $500.
Am I misreading it, Alderman Hall, I may be misreading it.
No, you're correct, it was the $125. And that was on this one here, it shows $125. It's two different ones now.
Yes.
You have two.
Okay.
The more recent one says $500.
Okay, all right. The most recent one was $500. I stand to be corrected, that was 2017.
Team, right.
2017.
2017.
Uh, the amount of $500, okay. Thank you so much. As I said, we haven't discussed amount, the most recent amount then, Alderman Hall, thank you, uh, was at, uh, uh, 2017, $500. I, I'll just ask this, um, what is the pleasure of the board, uh, in terms of amount and also in terms of funding going, some funding going to NAIPAC?
Well, I, I think, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Irving.
Um, well, yeah, everything has.
And we can table this right back. Okay.
Because I don't have a problem with anything, I saw what has been allocated for NAIPAC, so that does need.
Okay.
Uh, increased funding, and then the other will be just discussion, we can have it just tabled.
All right. I tell you what, I'm not even, I didn't even say I really needed a vote. Uh, this is for your information. No reason to even have a motion to table it, and we'll bring it back with whatever agreement y'all find suitable. Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right, I want to also give a shout out to Home. All right, I want to also give a shout out to Homecoming. Uh, the Natchez High School Homecoming was a great experience for me. I had the opportunity to attend Friday night and also give a key to the city to the Natchez High School class of nineteen ninety. What a moving event that was, understanding they are the first class for the consolidated high school, and they were a class of great brave individuals who, uh, who, uh, put aside the differences in two high schools and came together as one, uh, to graduate in nineteen ninety. Quite an event. Also, a great parade, yes.
Oh, yeah.
And I want to give thanks to the Natchez Adams County School Board for working with our downtown merchants to make sure that the parade, uh, took place at a time that did not hamper business downtown, and our police department has always did a great job. Also, the presence of police and sheriff deputies at the parade and also at the event at Homecoming. I'll just have to reiterate what has already been said. Um, this week, yes, sir.
Concordia.
And Vidalia also, the Concordia Sheriff, thank you. Also, I do want to say, a couple weeks ago, it was a real pleasure to be there with the NAACP at a major banquet commemorating sixty years of leadership and service to our community. The NAACP actually found its beginnings here in Natchez after the tragic incident, uh, where, uh, we had, uh, the, the shooting of George Metcalf during the very beginning of the chapter. And it also was in that very first beginning that we had the, the ordeal, the parchment ordeal. Uh, there were survivors of that ordeal at this event two weeks ago, and I was so grateful to be recognized. I will recall that we recognized them at NAIPAC back in February during Black History Month. Let us never forget all that's gone before us to make us a better city and a better people, and I was very grateful to be at that event.
Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Fraser?
Before you go any further, uh, the mayor was asked to speak at the NAACP meeting. They asked him to speak, and the, and the mayor say, he didn't say anything. He's, I was stunned that the mayor didn't even open his mouth or say anything. He was speechless. This is the first time I had seen the mayor speechless.
I get it.
Because he's never speechless on anything because he had something to say. And all the people looked at him and say, you don't have anything to say? The mayor say, no, I'm just gonna sit down and enjoy myself.
And Alderman Fraser said something I'll never forget, and he said, check this temperature, but something must be wrong with you. But, you know, I was just so humbled to be there and to be included, to be invited. And, and as I said then, uh, I said, you know, Ms. Lille Harris asked me to make comments. I said, people hear from me enough. I'm just blessed and grateful to be here, and it was a really great event.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Alderman Fraser. I got home and told Marla exactly what you said, by the way, she got a big clap out. She said, you can learn something from that. Anyway, uh, I want to just give a shout out to our fall events that are coming up. We already had a great weekend this past weekend. I want to ask everyone to really get out and support also, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, as we said in our prayer at the beginning. Come to our Paint the Town Pink event, four-thirty, uh, at the Van Stan this Thursday, and we're so grateful to Natchez Mayor. I believe that a lot's actually starting at four, and so come out where you're paying, show support for Natchez. Also, um, at, at four-thirty is the official event, but there's a lot happening out there. And then we go right into Live at Five at Five, which is the opening of the Balloon Festival. Free music, beautiful event, and I have to give a shout out to Sarah Lindsay Lockoff, who makes this happen, all of her sponsors. But also, our Parks and Rec Department pitched in last Friday and helped make sure there was ample lighting because it's getting dark out there. And I've got to say, uh, my goodness, uh, Ryan Dillon, everyone who, who got out there with Sarah Lindsay, you are to be commended. Um, this is a free event Thursday, and there will be a balloon globe, and then Friday, uh, the events start. So many other events. Let's make this, as I said earlier, a great fall for Natchez. Let's not forget also that we are in the midst of pilgrimage, and I'm going to end by saying something that I think is really historic. I was at an event yesterday where someone just toured on pilgrimage the John Bowman Banks House Museum. It was their first time to ever tour the house, and Miss Thelmanusum, they couldn't say more to your credit and that of everyone there conducting the tour. Um, it's wonderful to see that our pilgrimage continues uninterrupted since nineteen thirty-two, but also that the pilgrimage has now become so much more. I understand that the spirituals of freedom are now being heard as an chapel. It is a pilgrimage event. Also, the, uh, the Concord Quarters, several years now, has been on pilgrimage, and also more of the story being told in all of our great antebellum homes, these historic mansions. If it weren't for the stories of Natchez, in fact, the stories of all these people, the mansions, all of the efforts, all of the toll, the tribulations, and yes, the stories of slavery, the story of Natchez would not even exist today.
I agree with you.
We are one Natchez, a city where we don't tell just part of the story, we tell the whole story.
Yeah.
And there's so much that we can celebrate at this time when we consider the stories of courage, the stories of, and so I just wanted to end on this. We are so grateful to have a city like Natchez. Uh, I want to share condolences to the family of Louis Davis. I just learned today that Louis's wife, Tamika, lost her father last weekend, and so let us keep them in prayer, and we can close out of respect today for the family of, uh, of Louis and Tamika Davis, who mean so much to the city as a vector of our Natchez Transit. I'd like to now, uh, call for the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion has been made by Alderman Irving and seconded by Alderman Davis. Uh, discussion, we'll call for the question. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The ayes have it, motion carries. Let us have a moment of silence for the, uh, family during their time of grief. Father looking to you for comfort in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you all for those going to the Small Town Conference. Safe travels, and we look forward to great news coming to Natchez, some historic news coming really soon.
Congratulations.